Lord Mayor, would you like to conclude items E, L and N?
Yes, just briefly, in relation to the final item, which is the sale of the land at 41 Turner Road, Kedron, I think this is a fantastic outcome for the community. And whatever opposition councillors may or may not say, I have one view about this, which is it's a great outcome. Now, we were always going to be looking at opportunities to consolidate our depot on the north side, to make sure that we get appropriate purpose-built accommodation to service the needs for council, to be able to get out there and about on the north side of Brisbane and do the work that they do. And I have to say, the claim that because the depot is at Eagle Farm doesn't mean that council can't service other parts of the north side is ludicrous. Our council officers are out and about across the city every day, across all suburbs of the city in fact, and I know for a fact, many council officers, they may arrive at the depot early in the morning, but they spend their entire day out on the road. They're not sitting at the depot all day. And so, this consolidation of the depot at Eagle Farm will be a great outcome. As I said, it will deliver a better depot outcome, but what we'll get here is a great community outcome as well. We have the school that has put in to purchase this site, and that money from the purchase will go into the Green Future Fund that we established this year. That will allow us, and this is significant funding that we're talking about, that will allow us to purchase other parkland across the city and create new sporting fields. But on top of that, we will get, as part of this proposal, we will get facilities for a school which will also be able to be used by the public. So there will be playing fields and opportunities for the public to use these. So it is a win-win situation where we get publicly available sporting facilities, we get an educational outcome, plus we also get funding to buy and create more parkland across the city of Brisbane, and indeed, in other parts of the north side as well. So I think it's a great outcome. Now, when councillor Hammond talked about the fact that this has been a long time coming, what she was referring to was that there has been interest for quite some time in Padua and Mount Alvernia College acquiring this site. And so, there have been discussions going on about that potential for quite some time, which haven't necessarily been classified as formal negotiations, but it's definitely something that they've been wanting to do for quite some time. And so, council had to satisfy ourselves that this is not only a good deal for rate payers, but a good deal for the community and a good community outcome. Now, theoretically speaking, someone could have come in, taken this site, maybe paid a little bit more, I don't know if they would, maybe paid a little bit more, but we would have seen a whole stack of townhouses go in there maybe. Who wants that? Who wants that? So this outcome, I think, is a great community outcome, and something that we should all support. I won't go into any detail on the other items. I think this one is quite clearly the most critical one here, and something that I am pleased that councillor Hammond has been an advocate for, and local councils on the north side, but also disappointed that opposition councillors have chosen the easy road, which is just to criticise for the sake of criticising, when this is a great outcome.
All right, I will now put each item, I will now put item E, all those in favour of item E, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells.
When were we notified?
Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour, one against and four abstentions.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. I'll now put item L, all those in favour of item L, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. I'll now put item N, all those in favour of item N, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no.
Division.
The ayes have it.
No, it's the division.
Division.
I have a...
He hadn't called it yet.
I have a call for a division from the deputy mayor and councillor Allen. Ayes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour and five abstentions.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. Councillors, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 2nd of December. Lord Mayor.
Yeah, there we go. This is the right one. Mr Chair, I move that the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting report held on Monday, the 2nd of December 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 2nd of December 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate, Lord Mayor?
Yes, this particular item is a special item relating to a donation from council to the Queensland Country Women's Association for communities affected by the drought that we're all experiencing at the moment, but particularly, some parts of Queensland are experiencing in an extremely dire and serious manner. Just a short time ago, we were able to provide support of $100,000 for the bushfire relief efforts, and this complements that contribution with some council support towards the drought relief efforts that are going on. There's a number of programmes out there aimed at supporting drought-affected communities and people on the land that are really doing it tough at the moment, but it's been well recognised that one of the most important, one of the most in-demand programmes is the one run by the Queensland Country Women's Association. They just do a critical role out in the community, and they are very linked in with the needs of individual communities right across Queensland. In many cases, these incredible groups are the heart and soul of their communities, and they are in touch with the specific needs and problems and challenges. And they are also the people that are often the last point of call when things get really dire. And so, it was quite interesting and quite timely just the other day that Lucy Stone from the Brisbane Times wrote an article about the massive increase in demand on QCWA funds, and I think it's just worth quoting from that article to give an idea on the scale of the issue here. The Queensland branch of the Country Women's Association has been forced to reassess how it distributes crisis funding to farmers after an almost tenfold spike in pleas for help. Queensland State President Christine King, who is a resident of Brisbane, in the western suburbs, councillor Richards' constituent, said that in the three years to 2014, the QCWA Crisis Fund had assisted 880 families, so that's in the lead-up to 2014, 880 families. In less than two years since then, we have provided assistance to 8,000 families in regional, rural and remote communities impacted by this terrible drought. The fund is available to help pay bills, provide store credit or give families grocery vouchers to ensure that money stays in local communities. None of the money donated goes to administration fees, meaning 100% is given to people in need. Mrs King said the well-respected organisation took its responsibilities extremely seriously and had to reassess how it managed applications, given the sharp increase. So ultimately, we have this situation where, my understanding is there's many different organisations and entities wanting to help, but this is one of those ones that does make a real difference because it's providing that direct financial assistance when people are about to go under, when families are about to go under, and when they can't afford to put food on the table and pay basic bills and costs of living. And so, it is a tragedy of national proportions that we're seeing at the moment, and the people that sustain us with food and with a whole range of products that we all rely on, when they can't put food on their own table, you know that there's a serious issue. Now, we all hope and pray that the drought breaks soon, but certainly we know there's a massive need out there, and because, once again, we are a large council, Australia's largest council, we do have the capacity to help out in this kind of way, and I think it's appropriate that we should. So hopefully, this will get the support of all councillors.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. Just rise to support this item, of course, and my Labor colleagues will as well. This has been an ongoing challenge for Queensland and other states at the moment, the devastating droughts followed more recently by devastating bushfires, and the work that the QCWA here in Queensland has been doing has been nothing short of amazing, and whether that is directly in the communities where there are QCWA branches, or here in Brisbane where we have CWA branches. Right here in the city, we launched the Sangate branch of the QCWA, the newest branch in Queensland, just earlier this year, down at, they're hosted at the Volunteer Marine Rescue in Shawcliffe. They have a long history in Sangate, but went through a long period of not being a branch, and it is through events and responses to events particularly, that we've seen here, the response to the drought, the QCWA have coordinated, I think that have driven a lot of people in areas that didn't have this sort of community activity in the past, to make a real difference. And I've been very proud to support them, and have seen firsthand the work that they can do. Earlier this year, we held a fundraiser down in Sangate for drought relief, and all that money went towards this QCWA drought relief fund, I think that was around $17,000 raised at a barbecue in the Ombumhun Lagune Parklands. So every cent helps, and this $100,000 will absolutely make a huge difference to communities right around Queensland.
Further speakers, councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on this report for the donation for QCWA. The movement of QCWA was born from the need to assist women and families during their times of crisis. With three regions, 20 divisions and over 240 branches, the QCWA is the largest and most widespread women's organisation in Queensland. Women from all walks of life are members of the QCWA, and women join for a variety of reasons. QCWA means something different to everyone, from the scones to the sandwiches and to the times of need, and that's what makes QCWA the difference of all. Coming from a long matriarchal lineage, who have travelled the QCWA journey in our families and from the country to now the city, and as a councillor of significant country lifestyle area that's surrounded by a lot of bushland, it's certainly an area that actually fosters three different groups, from the Moghl QCWA, to the Brookfield, and now to one of the newer ones, the Kemmo Twilight Group. I know that whatever the reason, it is the friendship, and it's the overall desire to help others that has banded women together, and the reason they gather is for many things, whether it's about meeting new people, supporting another, supporting a new mum, making new friends, learning skills, or just journeying life together as a community. It's the fact that it's the communities when they need help, it's QCWA that come. To QCWA President Christine King, your executive, and all the members of QCWA, thank you for supporting our fellow Queenslanders during these times of crisis, this significant drought that we're going through in our regional, rural and remote Queensland. In QCWA essence and words, what bonds us is friendship and a strong desire to help others, be part of the community. So I ask all in this chamber to support this item tonight before you, because it is going to good use. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on the donation to the Country Women's Association of Queensland. And finally, this Lord Mayor is doing something useful, he's rushing it in, and it's a bit belated, I think, but certainly it's a very good thing that we're donating $100,000 to the Queensland Country Women's Association. I have had the pleasure of working with the two branches in my ward, the Anneli Yoronga Country Women's Association, who have been up and running for over 90 years, I went to their 95th birthday party a few months ago, I think, and the Oxley CWA. And can I just say that both organisations are extraordinary group of women who work very, very quietly within their communities to raise funds to support their country brothers and sisters, and to ensure that charitable organisations also in our local community receive funds. The Anneli Yoronga CWA raise, I think, just somewhere between sort of $7,000 and $8,000 a year, and there are 12 active members, 12 active members. They do this through scent auctions, raffles, and then they give it all away. They hire their haul out, so they cover the costs through that, but any money they raise, they give away to other rural country women's groups that are in need, and to other groups in our local community. So I just want to thank them for all of the wonderful work that they do. I know that there are a lot of people in the bush who are doing it very tough. We still have lots of Johnstons on the land, and there's not a lot of water, so everybody is having a very hard time out there at the moment. And I know that by giving this money to the Country Women's Association, that it will get to the people who need it the most. So this is a very good donation, and I'm very happy to support it.
Further speakers? Lord Mayor. I now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee, please. Deputy Mayor.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 26th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Davis, the report of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 26th of November 2019, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week's report was on the creative Brisbane creative economy strategy, and it was in the ENC papers last week, so I'm hoping the chamber are across it and already thinking of ways they can be involved. Our creative sector is very vital to our city's identity, prosperity and unique lifestyle, and Team Shrinna is serious about growing the local economy, providing a world-class lifestyle and developing talented, creative workforce. This economy strategy first started in 2013, it was designed to be open and adaptive, and this is the refresh, to make sure that we, as a Brisbane with the heart of the nation's fastest-growing region, is making sure our creative economy grows and evolves. Our goal is for Brisbane to be globally recognised for excellence in cultural and creative experiences, and there's a raft of ways that councillors can read in the document about how this is actually being done, through signature events, river art framework, live music city, Aboriginal Torres Strait Island led initiatives, night-time cultural experiences, key inner-city precincts during the day. We are dedicated to fostering a generation of new creative leaders, and Team Shrinna will continue to support initiatives that allow creatives to connect with local, national and international audiences. I would like to take this time to thank all the council officers that have worked within the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development portfolio, in particular, the outstanding divisional managers in Geoff, Andrea and Scott, and of course, the Brisbane Marketing Board, the board and the team that work at our economic development board as well, they do an absolutely outstanding job, and can I say on behalf of them, I know, and here in Team Shrinna, that we're incredibly enthusiastic about the future of our city. We back the creative economy, we back small business, we're making sure that we can get home quicker and safer, and it's all about making sure we have a global creative city where there is much more to see and do.
Further speakers? There being that, I'll put the resolution. All right, councillor Johnston.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you, you know, couldn't hear me today, and now you can't see me, so I'll just be hoping that you get a good rest over Christmas.
Would you like to speak or not? Are you going to speak or not? Are you just gonna...
Yes, I am actually speaking.
Okay, well then, get to the topic.
Yes, item B I'd like to speak on. Now, I'm just, I'm interested in the response to the petition, largely because I had 1,000 local residents sign a petition in my ward asking for the 196 bus service to be extended through Yoronga, and we were told, well, council can't do that, Translink has to do it. Now, I read with great interest the different response and the different level of service that you get from this council if you are a marginal LMP seat holder. That is exactly right, and I will draw everyone's attention to the responses that are included in this petition response that's being put forward today. So while it says here, council works in conjunction with Translink to ensure residents and visitors of Brisbane have access to reliable public transport network, with Translink having the overall responsibility for approving and funding new bus services or changes to services. In determining the bus network expansion, council works with Translink to ensure that services will be well utilised and meet customer demand. Then goes on to say that number of the bus services at this location are not at capacity. The best bit, though, is on the back page. Council has conducted preliminary investigations into possible alternative solutions, in addition to the services currently available from Langlands Park Station. This includes rerouting the existing P201 via Old Cleveland Road to stop at Langlands Park and Stone Corner stations. Any modifications require approval from Translink, etc. In response to this petition, council will make a recommendation to Translink to consider rerouting the P201 via Old Cleveland Road. Council will write to Translink asking they consider the petitioner's request to increase the number of services. Now, it's really interesting to me that council has clearly gone the extra mile here beyond what they told my residents just a few months ago. In that case, we got the second part of that response, which was, we would take it up with Translink. Not this well, we've done an investigation, we're going to recommend that it get done. So I think that this is an extremely illuminating document. I know that I copped some criticism for earlier today, but this is what is wrong with this council. This is the sickness that is pervading this council. There is one detailed responsive considered outcome for marginal LMP wards, and there is a completely different response for others. It is shameful that this is the way that this LMP administration is going about its business, and that some, I saw that councillor Matic, and that was the stupidest, most childish thing you could possibly do, given it's on camera.
Point of order.
Point of order, point of order to you councillor Hammond.
He just rubbed his nose.
No, he did not. And guess what? There's a camera watching you.
Okay, councillor Johnston, look, it's the last meeting of the year, it's almost eight thirty, it's past 8.30, can you just stick to the topic at hand and not pick fights with other people, please?
Well, when councillor Matic's making rude finger gestures at me, let me be clear, yes he did.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you councillor Matic.
I did nothing of the kind, and I require that councillor Johnston withdraw that statement.
Yeah, it is out of character. Councillor Johnston, can you please, councillor Matic has asked you to withdraw your statement.
Councillor Matic made rude finger gestures towards me, it'll be on the tape.
Okay, all right, no, that's it. Thank you. Are there any further speakers?
I'm still speaking, thank you very much.
No, you're not. Councillor Adams.
I'm sorry, excuse me, on what basis, on what basis are you stopping me from speaking on the matters before us today?
Because you have moved off topic and you're wasting time.
I'm speaking on a bus petition and was doing that.
No, you are not. That's my point, you are not speaking on a bus petition, you're trying to pick a fight with a councillor who wasn't paying attention to you. So either get back on topic or move on.
That's what I'm doing, and the evidence will be on the tape. So, I just want to put on the record my concern about the double standard that's on offer at Brisbane City Council for LMP, marginal LMP wards with respect to the extra mile that council will go versus those that are not in marginal LMP seats, and the way they are treated so shamefully by this LMP administration. If this is the standard that council will undertake in an LMP ward, it should do the same in every other ward in this city.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and the only sickness we have in this council is the paranoia we hear from that woman continually in this place. The councillor for Tennyson, I'm sorry, Mr Chair, through you.
Yes, thank you.
The paranoia we hear from the councillor for Tennyson.
Right, okay, that's it. Now, as I say, friends, it's the last meeting of the year, it's after 8.30, everyone I think has had enough, that people are testing each other out, I'm not interested in it. Whatever personal animosities people have with each other, I don't care, and nor should any of you. Please get on topic and deal with the matters in front of us. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I was accused of having a sickness because of the bias on this side of the chamber, and the previous speaker...
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Okay, councillor Adams.
It'll be on the video. And the councillor that spoke before me spoke more about an imagined movement from another councillor, that is the paranoia I was speaking of. The councillor who spoke before me very clearly said, the response that she got was take it up with Translink, and I can concur, as you see in the petition today, that it says we take it up with Translink, we take it up with Translink, it's actually written in this response here, but I can assure you for this petition, and probably the response that came to the council before, and many of the blue folders that we signed to the Lord Mayor, we do not operate the bus timetables, we make a request to Translink to reroute, we don't often get anything in the positive, actually, I can't think of anything while I've been in the chair that we get in a positive, but we do take it up with Translink with every request we have. I sign a letter back to the petitioners or the constituents or the councillors, and I sign the same letter to Matt Longlands in Translink as well. So in this petition, as we do with every other response, there is no bias, there is only paranoia, we will be writing to Translink to consider the petitioner's request to increase the number of services in the morning from Langlands Park.
Thank you. Now, councillor Johnston, your misrepresentation, please limit your comments to the misrepresentation at hand, do not use this as an opportunity to litigate your argument again or to settle some imagined personal score. Councillor Johnston.
For God's sake. Yeah, councillor Adams said that I said she had a sickness, I made absolutely no such statement about councillor Adams herself.
Thank you.
She is...
All right, I will now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor McLaughlin, the Infrastructure Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 26th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Huang, the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 26th of November 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'll just go to the report that's before us, which was a report in committee last week about, or briefing to the committee on the Moghl Road Coonan Street intersection upgrade. This is that big scary roundabout out near Indrapilly, which if you are like me from the north side, you enter with great trepidation and no small amount of fear, waiting to see what happens if cars will give way to you or not, and as a consequence, I think many of those from other parts of the city. You are very brave, you western suburbs councillors and residents, to just plough on through, and good luck to you, but I've got to say, I've always approached that particular intersection with great caution, and I'm... intersection with great caution, and I'm pleased to see that residents agree that there is need for work to be undertaken. Certainly the crash record shows that this is a significant issue with driver accidents, and thirty-two crashes occurred on the roundabout in a short period of time, seven requiring medical treatment, ten leading to hospitalisations, so this is a very high volume roundabout in terms of vehicle traffic. It has been subject to a number of planning and concept designs over the years. In twenty fifteen, the council acquired the land within the roundabout island for a future intersection upgrade. Designs and associated analysis were undertaken early this year, two concept designs were released for community feedback, and there's a pretty clear community support for the overpass option, which is out now for future, for further design elements based on feedback that's come from the community. So I think this is a great infrastructure project, which will deliver many benefits for all Brisbane residents, particularly those in the western suburbs, and will make it much safer. I think if there's an obsessive focus, as there has been in some reporting, on what happens to traffic movements in terms of, does it make journeys shorter or longer? I think, to be honest, my observation of that is completely irrelevant. The relevance here is to make this intersection safer, and that's what will happen as a consequence of this work. The focus on whether or not there's a marginal increase or decrease in traffic, in the time it takes to get through the intersection, I think entirely misses the point. I'm very pleased to see this work proceeding, and we'll get on with it, I think this will be a great outcome for the city. There were three petitions, if anyone wants to participate in that debate, I'll respond at the other end.
Further speakers? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on item D and ask that that item be taken seriatum for the purposes of voting.
Thank you councillor Cook, that was item D for seriatum.
Thank you. Mr Chair, item D, the petition requesting council immediately reduce the speed limit on Riding Row between Winham and Litton Roads Morning Side to forty kilometres an hour, immediately install warning signs leading up to the pedestrian crossing on the corner of Riding Road and Passion Street under the LED road signs programme, and urgently design and install traffic lights, and upgrade the intersection of Riding Road and Passion Street in the nineteen-twenty financial year. Mr Chair, here we are again, back in March this year, I rose in this chamber to support a petition that had close to two hundred signatures, that petition was very specific, it contained a request that council undertake the investigation and design of traffic signals at this same intersection in the last financial year, and that in the current financial year, funding be provided to undertake that work. Mr Chair, this is on top of this intersection upgrade being listed in my ward budget, certainly for the last two years that I've been here, and by the previous councillor for Morning Side, councillor Sutton, since two thousand and five. Mr Chair, we know that Riding Road and Passion Street both function as major roads in the council road hierarchy, these roads also include usage by buses and heavy vehicles. It's important to note that there are also a number of schools directly impacted by this proposed intersection upgrade, including Morning Side State School, St Peter and Paul's and Belimba State School, all whom encourage active school travel and have participated previously in council's active school travel programme. There are also a number of supervised crossings along Riding Road, including the one located next to this intersection of Passion Street and Riding Road, which was the subject of a horrific accident involving two sisters aged ten and twelve in August this year, Jazzy and Leila. Mr Year, Mr Year, Mr Chair, that accident was the catalyst for this further petition before us today, I'm aware that one of the sisters has written directly to the Lord Mayor on the issue, I've also written to the Lord Mayor on this issue on a number of occasions, and to the previous Chair of Infrastructure, councillor Cooper. Mr Chair, this intersection was also a key concern for residents in the council-run Move Safe report, there were not one, not two, not three, but six pieces of feedback, as well as comments in relation to this intersection, many more regarding the streets in the immediate vicinity and the entire length of Riding Road. I wanted to read some of those comments into the record again today, I did read them into the record in March, but I'm not sure they were heard at that time, so I'm just going to read them in again. And I quote, 'No safe place to cross, drivers turn across the cars, across the crossing, cars travel too fast.' Another, 'People drive straight over the crossing, not looking for people.' Another, 'Drivers turn across the crossing, cars travel too fast.' Another, 'Very busy intersection at peak hour and school times, dangerous queuing across intersection before crossing, speeding common, needs traffic lights.' And another, 'There is an existing pedestrian crossing, however, the visibility for cars to slow down is poor, also at the intersection of Passion and Riding Road, is extremely busy and makes it hard for cars to do a right-hand turn, which then also impacts the pedestrian crossing as drivers are concentrating on cars more than the crossing.' And finally, 'Cars often do not stop at this pedestrian crossing.' Mr Chair, as I've said, this request has been outstanding since two thousand and five, this project has been listed as a priority for the Morning Side Ward for fourteen years. We know that this intersection has been previously assessed by council and meets the established thresholds for signalisation. We also know that there are significant safety concerns expressed by local residents. We know that between this petition today and previous petition earlier this year, over twelve hundred and fifty residents support this upgrade. Last time this matter was before the chamber, my residents were told that their request was noted. This time, we have a commitment that the project will be listed on the twenty-twenty-one budget, but no firm commitment of funding. We have seen the installation of the LED warning lights on the approach to the pedestrian crossing, and I thank the Lord Mayor for acting quickly in the installation of those LED warning lights, and to the council officers who made that happen very quickly following the accident. But there is no commitment for a further reduction in the speed limit on Riding Road, which was also the subject of this petition. I fully support a further reduction of the speed limit to forty kilometres an hour, as someone who uses Riding Road as a pedestrian almost every day, I want to see both pedestrian and cyclist safety improved through a further reduction in speed. I understand that the Speed Management Committee implemented a reduction on the fifth of September, and when I was consulted on that reduction, which was prior to this most recent accident, I supported the reduction, but in my view, just because it was recently reviewed, is not a good enough reason to argue that there should not be a further review, and as I just said, Mr Chair, that was before this most recent accident. This is an incredibly busy corridor, which thousands of children navigate every day for school, and also on weekends, with hundreds of children also playing sport in Hawthorn Park. There have been at least six serious pedestrian crashes on Riding Road, including a fatality in recent years. Just last weekend, we had another serious pedestrian accident on Passion Street, where two people were hospitalised, this brings the total accidents to seven in this precinct. Mr Chair, my residents are frustrated, they want this intersection fixed and upgraded as a priority, we know that this is a dangerous intersection, and my residents have been spurred into action, but they want council to listen. Riding Road already has three school zones where speed limits are different from the rest of the road during those school zone periods. In my view, dropping to forty kilometres an hour would stop any confusion, as well as boosting safety. Mr Chair, I've been in regular touch with the girl's mother Nat, who has committed to not resting until this intersection is upgraded. This brave woman witnessed the accident, and as soon as her girls had recovered, she started her campaign to make sure that no one else had to go through the same ordeal. She door knocked and called upon many local businesses and residents, and you can see the outcome of that door knocking and that community action today before us. Nat is a very strong woman, who is focused on getting a good outcome for her community, but she has told me that her daughters continue to suffer nightmares as a result of the accident, one that was no fault of their own. I want to thank Nat, Leila and Jasmine for their tireless work to prevent another family having to experience what they've been through since August, and to the broader community for rallying behind them and this petition. Mr Chair, budgets are all about priorities, and the council should be focused on providing the basic services ratepayers deserve. We need to cut back on waste and rorts and start spending where ratepayers need it. Mr Chair, I cannot support this petition response today, this evening, because it does not go far enough. The last time a petition came here on this issue, our concerns were noted. This time, we have made it onto the budget list, but that is, that item has been sitting on the, certainly the local councillors' budget list for many years. What we really need is a commitment of funds now and a further speed reduction. Mr Chair, only Patrick Condrin and Labor have committed to that outcome, and I ask the mayor again tonight to make that same commitment to my local community.
Thank you councillor Cook, further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, thank you councillor Cook for your contribution to this petition, and you've answered some of the issues that were raised in the petition in your speech there. As you note, the LED road signs have been installed, you also noted that there has been a speed reduction already on this road. I can only talk to the specifics of what was asked for in the petition, and those were a reduction in the speed to forty kilometres an hour, and as you've noted, there's already been a reduction in the speed via the Speed Management Committee, of which council participates along with the Queensland Police Service and TMR, to, via an engineer's assessment about what the suitable speed is. So that, that speed reduction has already been through that process, and it doesn't stop you, as you've mentioned, petitioning for a further reduction, and you're welcome to do so, but that, that reduction has already been recently undertaken. And in regards to the petition request for the virtually immediate installation of traffic signals in the nineteen-twenty financial year, well, as you've noted, and you're probably aware, that would be an impossibility within the remainder of the current financial year budget, but that, that work has been listed for consideration in the twenty-twenty-one budget. But to, to request or suggest that it would be within a six-month timeframe, be able to, would be able to design and install traffic signals, I think most people in this place, while we share your passion for road safety and the safety of children on pedestrian crossings, I think we're also real as to recognise that it takes more than six months to design and install traffic signals. So understand your position, understand your, your passion for road safety, which all of us share, but the reality is that two of the things that you, that were asked for in this petition have been achieved, a speed reduction, installation of LED safety signs, and a probably more sensible timeframe for consideration of the installation of traffic signals. Mr Deputy Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to respond to that, I should note that in the seven or eight weeks I've been in the chair role, I've come in on the tail end of hard work by a lot of council officers over the course of the year, I'd just like to thank everybody in Brisbane Infrastructure for their hard work and for welcoming me as the chair over the last seven or eight weeks. Thanks to Jackie, Jane and McLaughlin in particular in my office, and have a Merry Christmas everybody, and see you in the new year.
Thank you councillor McLaughlin, we'll now put items A, B and C, all those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those against? The ayes have it. We will now put item D, all those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Against?
No!
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cook and councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my left, nose to my right. No, other way around, sorry. As you were. Clarks, can you please read the result?
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and five against.
Please return to your seats. Councillor Burke, City Planning Committee, please.
Thanks very much, Mr Deputy Chair, Mr Deputy Chair, I move the report of the City Planning Committee meeting held on Tuesday the twenty-sixth of November twenty nineteen be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Burke and seconded by councillor Mackay, that the report of the City Planning Committee dated Tuesday the twenty-sixth of November two thousand and nine be adopted. Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Deputy Chair, before I get to the committee report, I just want to take a moment to thank the fantastic staff that I have in Development Services and also in the city planning part of my portfolio. Mr Chairman, I have the great pleasure of working with some fantastic council officers in my time in this place, and I want to thank the divisional manager, Andrea Canife, I also want to thank Marcus Mulholland, who is the manager for Development Services and has one of the most difficult jobs, along with all of his offices in that part of council, going through the various development applications, requests for change, building approvals, operational works, and a whole range of other approvals, Mr Chairman, and going through those and assessing them against city plan, against the state planning regulations, Mr Chairman, but also taking on board the feedback and views of the community and trying to balance the various needs of the communities, but also the regulations and the frameworks that we work within, and I know that they do a fantastic job making those decisions and trying to balance that every day of the week. While it's easy for some people to stand up and criticise those, those officers, Mr Chairman, they turn up every day at work trying to make the best decisions possible for the residents of Brisbane and for this council. I also want to thank and acknowledge, Mr Chairman, Dyke Curry and the fantastic team that she leads in council. It has been a huge year when it comes to the planning section of council, Mr Chairman, so eight neighbourhood plans, six renewal strategies, we launched the Better Suburbs initiative, we've done twelve major amendments to city plan, three minor amendments to city plan, five temporary local planning instruments, we've had six Brisbane canvas artworks completed, we've maintained hundreds of pieces of public art, we delivered Botanica again, Mr Chairman, with thirty-one thousand visitors supporting twenty-six local and international artists, we've delivered seven village precinct projects, eight City of Lights projects, we've also started the Design Led City and Design Strategy for Brisbane document, gone out to consultation, got the feedback, finalised that document, we've done a low-medium density design guide, we've also done a character housing design guide as well, Mr Chairman, and been out for consultation, that not only looks at protecting Queenslanders, but also, Mr Chairman, looks at protecting a range of other traditional building types that we have in this city, including Spanish bungalows, or El Bungalow Espanola, which we figured out the other day what it would mean in Spanish, Mr Chairman. We also... We also, Mr Chairman, have done a lot of work around Brisbane's Future Blueprint actions and requirements in that regard, Mr Chairman, and continued to deliver on this administration's strong track record of listening to the residents of Brisbane, responding to their concerns, Mr Chairman, and then implementing those outcomes, Mr Chairman, and making sure that we're trying to get the planning settings right for the city. So I want to thank the managers that I've mentioned, but in particular, all the staff that sit below them, because they do the hard work, Mr Chairman. As I've said at a number of planning events that I've been at, where I've been speaking, it is not, not just the Lord Mayor and myself who get to announce the fantastic policies and the projects that we're doing, but it is the dedication and the hard work from the council officers, whether they are in the arts part of the planning team, Mr Chairman, whether they're in the heritage section, whether they are in the strategy and planning section, Mr Chairman, or whether they are in Development Services itself, they are doing the hard work, they are doing the fantastic work for our council and for our communities across the whole of the city. Speaking of which, we had a presentation at committee last week, Mr Chairman, on the City Reach Waterfront Master Plan, this is another one of those documents that this council has undertaken to go out and seek consultation and feedback from the residents of Brisbane and from businesses for this important part of the city. I've spoken in the council chamber about this document, so I'm not going to talk at length about it, but I want to do, want to thank the council officers, this is a really exciting opportunity to revitalise an important link in our CBD when it comes to connecting to the river, and we've put forward some ideas and we'll be out for consultation now, and we look forward for the feedback from people. Finally, there's three petitions, Mr Chairman, I'm happy to have those debated in the chamber. chamber.
Thank you, Counselor Burke. Further speakers? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just rise to speak on item D, the petition requesting council conduct broader community discussions on the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan Draft Strategy, and I ask, ask that that item be taken seriously and for voting purposes, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. This is a petition that was tabled alongside, well, there's two petitions here, but this was, this has been dealt with together alongside another petition from Deegan residents proposing zoning changes, in total, well over a thousand signatures from my community. This one has 564 on it together, which is more than the submissions received on the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan itself, which should tell you something about the process. And that neighbourhood planning process under the LMP is an absolute disgrace. We've seen it right across Brisbane, and the most recent example, of course, is right in my community in Sangate with the first stage of the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan now out there, no longer for consultation, and that's exactly what this petition was about, that process was far, far too short. The Lord Mayor could afford to send personally addressed, direct mailed letters when a community stood up and fought back, but he couldn't afford to tell affected residents about their properties being rezoned, Chair.
One moment, Mr, Counselor Cassidy. As it's nine o'clock, councillors, as it's nearing 9pm, the meeting will automatically stand adjourned unless we agree to continue the sitting. It is, is it the will of the council that the sitting of council proceed beyond 9pm? All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The noes? The ayes have it, the meeting will continue. Counselor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. So, we had a situation where the Lord Mayor had found the money in the budget to send personally addressed, direct mailed letters to people, but couldn't afford those same people that courtesy when he was proposing massive zoning changes on their properties. So, what we've seen is this LMP council's idea of consultation is dumping a 24-page document on the council website and expecting local residents with what you'd expect is a fairly basic understanding of planning to fully grasp hidden messages. How are local residents supposed to know that superficial words like, and I quote from the document, "Designed to complement the existing streetscape with a setback above the second storey and transition to adjoining character residential means six-storey apartment blocks all throughout Sangate"? And that was not explained to anyone properly, and not try, not meant, not to mention, Chair, trying to sneak through a rezoning in Deegan, and that, releasing that draft strategy, all council did was put a sign at the Deegan train station but not say anything on that about the proposed changes. It's an absolute joke, but unfortunately, no one is laughing, Lord Mayor. Now, disappointingly, the Lord Mayor told a packed crowd at the Sangate Town Hall that the consultation on the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan was just fine, it was fine and dandy. He then went on to say, when challenged about that, that if local residents wanted it any better, it was up to them to just do it themselves. Well, unfortunately, this is the attitude that locals have come to expect from this Lord Mayor and this out-of-touch LMP council. Consultation is much more than sending a single-page flyer asking people to trawl through council's website and find a document that is full of vagaries. Now, when it comes to that letter that was sent out by the Lord Mayor after, after the community did its own consultation in lieu of council, we had a situation where Team Shrinna went out there claiming to have campaigned against the plan that Team Shrinna had put out a number of weeks earlier and had some great political win over itself. People are rightly a little confused about that messaging out there, Chair. So a community shouldn't have to carry out this consultation on their own behalf, but I am very, very glad to live in a, in a community that has done just that, and perhaps those residents should get a rates discount for doing that work for council. To, to, for this Lord Mayor to say this process of consultation has been a success is galling, Chair, but I'll tell you what is even more galling, was to sit in this chamber earlier and listen to the Lord Mayor show faux outrage about people's families being dragged through the mud for political point scoring. It has been particularly galling to have my pregnant sister dragged through the mud to try and score cheap political points by Team Shrinna in this process. What exactly those individuals on Team Shrinna are trying to suggest, I'm not 100% sure, sure, Chair, but what is for sure, what is for sure and certain is that Team Shrinna will stop at nothing to cover for their despicable attempt at sneaking through major changes in this neighbourhood plan. Now, early on, I stood up and said, yes, my community does need a renewed Sangate neighbourhood plan, but I didn't for one second think that we would have such a hollow process of consultation and such a poor outcome, even in this very first stage of, of the neighbourhood plan. And God knows, Chair, what would have happened if we didn't have such an engaged community where I live in my ward. So I won't be supporting the response to this petition as set out here in the papers, which basically says to my community, oh, that was, that was just our, our first, our first salvo, that was the, that was the first go, and you'll have another opportunity after the next council election to come back and see what we really want for your community. Well, that's not good enough, and I'm not going to take this lying down.
Further speakers? Counselor Burke.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Just give me a moment, I'm just trying to find the letter from Counselor Cassidy saying that he wanted the consultation period extended. That's right, I can't find it, Mr Chairman, because it doesn't exist, because such is the great outrage from Counselor Cassidy on this issue, that did he put pen to paper to express his desires and wish to the planning chairman, saying that during the consultation period? Counselor Burke, do you think we could possibly, do you think that you could see an extension to the consultation period? No. No, he didn't, Mr Chairman, because again, like we continue to see so often when it comes to the Australian Labor Party, it is all about the politics. It's all about the politics over the actual people that they represent, and more broadly, the people of the city of Brisbane. Because how do you spell hypocrisy, Mr Chairman? It's ALP. Because they are the party.
Point of order.
Point of order, Counselor Johnson.
That's not a factual statement, Mr Deputy Chairman, and I believe that allegation should be withdrawn, as it's not a factual statement.
There's, councillors, there's a bit of noise going on. I think we can tone it down a little bit. Counselor Burke, please continue.
Might be a little bit dyslexic, Mr Chairman.
Point of order. I'm sorry, Mr Deputy Chairman, but earlier today, the Chair of Council has said that factual statements can be points of order, and they have to be withdrawn. The Lord Mayor did that earlier today. Now, now Counselor Burke stood up and said hypocrisy is spelt ALP, that is factually untrue. Now, I would appreciate it if you would clarify whether your ruling is the same as Counselor Wines, that factual statements must be withdrawn if they're not factual.
Counselor Burke, please.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman. As I was saying.
Mr Deputy Chairman, point of order.
Point of order, Counselor Johnson.
You have an obligation to make a ruling under the meeting's local law, and the precedent was set very clearly by Counselor Wines earlier today, based on the Lord Mayor's statements to the Chair of Council, and clearly factual, well, they don't have to be factual, I guess, that's the issue. So either there is such a ruling or there's not, and I would appreciate your clarity as the Chair, Acting Chair of Council.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. I believe that at this point in time and this hour of the evening, your intention is to waste time, and I would rather, much prefer Counselor Burke finish off his report so that we can continue the meeting. Thank you. Counselor Burke.
Point of order, Mr Chairman. In fact, it is my obligation under the meeting's local law to draw to your attention matters of disorderly conduct in this place. Based on the Lord Mayor's precedent he set today by saying he wanted a non-factual statement withdrawn, the deputy mayor of this council, the chairman of this council said that non-factual statements had to be withdrawn. Now, either it is a rule in this place that is applied, or it's not, and I am seeking your ruling as the Chair of Council, not your personal abuse, innuendo, and inappropriate comment, I am seeking a ruling as I'm entitled to under the meeting's local law, and based on the precedent set by the Lord Mayor, I expect it to be a similar decision by you.
In that case, Counselor Johnson, I do not uphold your point of order. Counselor Burke, please continue.
Point of order.
Point of order. I can assist both yourself and Counselor Johnson, because I know exactly what I said. I said it was factually incorrect and potentially defamatory, is what I said, and that is the key there.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order, Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I move dissent in your ruling.
Right, thank you. As there's no second, we'll continue on. Counselor Burke.
Neighborhood plans, Mr Chairman, so we know that the Labor Party from day one have never supported neighbourhood planning in this city. We know as a fact, we know as a fact that they actually tried to subvert the process in the joint council days to make neighbourhood planning fail, Mr Chairman, because they saw the opportunity, the political opportunity, Mr Chairman, and they decided to take it, and since then they've been cast into this ongoing, this ongoing position to never support and never be a part of the neighbourhood planning process other than to throw stones, Mr Chairman, and to try to attack the process. On this side of the chamber, we've continued to engage with the residents of Brisbane, we've listened to their views and we respond, Mr Chairman, in kind, and we do that through our neighbourhood planning process, we've done it through our Better Brisbane, Better, the Brisbane Future Blueprint process, Mr Chairman, and through Plan Your Brisbane. We have continued to listen and we've continued to engage, and it's no different with the process that's undergoing in Sangate, to Brackenridge, to Eight Mile Plains, Mr Chairman, and the one that's being undertaken in Maruka, Salisbury and Nathan, Mr Chairman. It goes above and beyond our statutory requirements when it comes to planning set down by the state government. We have this draft strategy, draft renewal strategy process that is part of our neighbourhood planning process, Mr Chairman, which you do not have to do if you are following strictly to the state government's guidelines when it comes to doing neighbourhood plans, Mr Chairman. We go out and we do extra consultation. We sent out 9,000 brochures when we announced the neighbourhood plan, we sent out 9,000 brochures, Mr Chairman, to the community out there when we went out with the draft strategy. We did two public community information sessions, Mr Chairman, we put up other information around the community, we had social media, there was media stories on it as well, Mr Chairman. Did Counselor Cassidy send out a flyer to his community to say, hey, this is happening? I know when I had a neighbourhood plan in the Centenary suburbs, I sent out two flyers saying to residents going, hey, have your opportunity. Hit a nerve there. I sent out, I sent out flyers to my community going, hey, have your say, hey, be a part of this process, Mr Chairman. So it's all right for the Labor Party to stand up here and throw stones, because that's what they do, because it's all about the politics, Mr Chairman, and not about the outcomes for the residents of Brisbane, and time and time again, they are being shown that that is what drives them, that is what their passion is, is playing the politics rather than actually doing the work that they have to do for the residents of Brisbane.
Thank you, Counselor Burke. We'll now put the resolution for items A, B and C. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The noes? The ayes have it. We'll now do item D. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The noes?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by Counselor Cassidy and Counselor Cook. Ayes to my right and noes to my left, please. Dens, please close the bars. Clarks, can you please read the results?
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and four against.
Counselor Hammond, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee held on Tuesday the 26th of November 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Counselor Hammond and seconded by Counselor Richards that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 26th of November 2019 be adopted. Nothing? No? Any further debate?
Oh, sorry, she's not going to get up and, okay.
Counselor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Listen, I want to rise and speak on item or clause G, and could I ask it to be taken seriously and for voting purposes, please?
Item G, taken seriously and for voting? Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Listen, I, it was a petition by a number of residents in the Homestead Village area, asked calling for a toilet block or a toilet block to be established in the, in the park area of Homestead Village. Again, I didn't, I, I was, when I looked through the recommendation by council, right, I, I was probably in agreements with the council officers in, in some respects, and that was that the, generally, the parks that are identified as district parks and metropolitan park levels, right, do, do usually have a toilet facility in them, but this, this particular park is just a, a local, a local, in the case of Forest Lake, a local village park, and I, again, I wouldn't have had that problem with that recommendation being stated there, but just prior to that, that statement, the paragraph before, it says the council does not support the installation of the toilet facility in Homestead Park, Forest Lake. There are currently two existing toilet facilities south of Homestead Park located at the Lake, Lake Parkland Precinct, and that, the closest one that they're talking about is like a kilometre and a half away, and if you had to walk there, of course, it'd probably take you 20, 25 minutes, depending upon the age of the person making the journey, but I, I was just looking at, I, I looked at that, I thought, well, that's really just going to incense the petition, the head petitioner and the people who signed the petition. If that paragraph had been left out, I wouldn't have had a problem with the recommendation at all, so that's why I'm voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers?
Mr Deputy Chair, I rise tonight just to speak briefly in regards to the item, item B, the creation of a new park at 1059 Paradise Road. It currently is part of Sergeant Dan Stillham Memorial Reserve, and this small part of Parkland is part of the Oxley Creek Transformation Project, and it is going to have a new name, Worrel Parkland. This is an indigenous name to reflect the water holes and the, the tributaries that are there in that location. It is a beautiful location. It is a beautiful location. And can I say, I had the opportunity to inspect it most recently, and it is coming along great guns. And it will be a valuable addition to our local community, to the Oxley Creek as an entirety. And it is one of the first stages of the Oxley Creek Transformation. And for the work that is being done by the council officers and those engaged with the Oxley Creek Transformation, it is going to be an absolute asset. And I commend this report to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Further speakers? Councillor Hammond. No? Okay, we'll put the resolution for items A, B, C, D, E and F. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Noes? The ayes have it. For item G, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Noes?
Noes.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cook and councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and noes to my left, please. Tens, please close the bars. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and five against.
The ayes have it. Please take your seats. Councillor Howard, Field Services Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 26th of November, 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Marks, that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting dated the 26th of November, 2019 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I too would like to pay tribute to our very many staff that we have that contribute to making Brisbane the beautiful subtropical city that we are blessed with its leafy green neighbourhoods and its beautiful parks. But it takes an incredible team that works hard every hour of every day with great pride and passion to protect Brisbane's unique lifestyles. So today, I give thanks to the almost 2,000 dedicated officers of Field Services who work hard all year round, round the clock to deliver these achievements for the residents of Brisbane. And it's because of their hard work that Brisbane continues to be the envy of the nation, as Australia's most sustainable city, and known worldwide for being one of the cleanest cities in the world. So, Mr Deputy Chair, I would like once again to thank our amazing officers. I'd like to thank Athena and Kirsty from my office and really thank them for all of their hard work and take this opportunity on behalf of council and this chamber to wish each and every one of them and their families a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So moving to the report, we had a presentation on business recycling and a petition requesting that council put in place a watering schedule for the trees planted on the footpath along the Esplanade near Forest Lake Boulevard at Forest Lake. And we were very happy to, to accede to that request. Council officers inspected the trees and there will be additional watering that was occurring. So I would, on that note, recommend the report to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? Being no speakers, councillor Howard. Put the resolution. All those in favour of the Field Services report? Say aye.
Aye.
Noes? The ayes have it. Councillor Maddick, Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee, please.
Mr Deputy Chair, I move the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 26th of November, 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Maddick, seconded by councillor Richards, that the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 26th of November, 2019 be adopted. Councillor Maddick.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Before I get to the report, I just want to also take the opportunity to thank all of the officers within the Lifestyle Community Services Division for their amazing work and everything they do day in, day out. In my earlier question today, I didn't get to finish all of the contribution that this division makes because that's how significant their role is. I think someone really referred to the division as social infrastructure. I think that's a really apt way of being able to represent what these amazing people do. So my hat goes off to them. So I wish them all, I say to them, thank you very much for all of the work they do, from the divisional manager to all of the staff. I wish them all a very Merry Christmas. And to my staff in, in the, in the chair's office, I thank them very kindly for everything they do and to the ward staff as well. Mr Chair, there was a presentation on the City Hall basement, too. I'd like to thank the officers for the opportunity to take us on a tour through another section of City Hall, the 50 Plus Centre, plus all of the different facilities that we have through the kitchen, the opportunity by the head chef to allow us that opportunity to go through there and to explain some of the activities. It's an amazing place underneath this building and the work that they all do to be able to meet the needs of all of the different people that come here, right through the Lord Mayor's seniors' parties that have been running since yesterday, to the catering, to the needs, and of course, the importance of the 50 Plus Centre and the tour that we had through there in providing that community space for people to come together to share and to learn. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Maddick. No? So I'll put the resolution for the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr, thank you, Mr Deputy Chairman. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 26th of November, 2019 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Murphy that the report of the Finance Administration Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 26th of November, 2019 be adopted.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Before moving on to the committee report, I wanted to touch on a couple of items. Firstly, in the questions on notice today, question 11, I want to clarify a question on notice. The, the response there was related to travel expenses. And the clarification I want to make is that the answer is inclusive of all travel expenses. For example, it includes airfares, accommodation or any conference fees. We are more than happy to provide a breakdown of the expenses to all councillors at the next council meeting. I'd also like to thank the council officers in the Finance and Administration portfolio. And in terms of the divisional responsibilities, the Organisational Services Division led by Bill Lyon, which encompasses Corporate Finance, Corporate Comms, Human Resources, Information Services, Strategic Procurement and the Support Services Centre. And under the City Administration and Governance Division led by Pip Hold, I'd like to thank the teams in Assurance Services, City Legal, CLO, Disaster Management, Ethical Standards in the Lord Mayor's Administrative Office. This is really the engine room of council that supports the other portfolios. A lot of the work they do is kind of unseen and occurs in the background. But the people within these divisions work extremely hard and I'd like to commend them for their, their efforts this year. Turning to the, the committee report, we had a presentation on learning and development and how council trains its staff. And we also had a regular report on the bank and investment report for October 2019. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Allen. I'll put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have two petitions. One for traffic calming to reduce injury and damage risk against Culia Avenue at Holland Park West. And one with over 370 signatures for calling on council to name John Walker Place within the Brisbane Corso Reserve in honour of his 45 years of service to the local community through Neighbourhood Watch.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I have a petition to upgrade the Evident Park Library to include more modern facilities which will reflect recent upgrades to other Brisbane City Council libraries.
Councillor Maddick.
Mr Chairman, I have a petition initiated by councillor Cunningham for the naming, for naming the boardwalk at Bowie's Flat Wetland at Cooperoo to Catherine Birmingham Boardwalk. And there is a letter of support on behalf of councillor Cunningham with the petition.
Councillor Cook.
Thank you. I have three petitions. The first is for council to rename Alumba Street Park at 69 Silver Street, Balmoral to Suva Bay Park. The second is a petition requesting that the centre aisle on Dilkara Street in Balmoral be retained to allow for road widening to the street to address safety concerns and access concerns. And the third is a petition requesting the formalisation of the red pavement threshold located on Oxford Street to the east of Duke Street as a marked zebra crossing.
Councillor Cunningham.
Chair, four petitions, one in relation to resurfacing of Major Street, Manly West, resurfacing of Gliding Street, Manly West, resurfacing of Milford Street, Manly West. And also a petition requesting that Winham Junior Rugby League playing fields be renamed the Lionel Morgan playing fields.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I have a petition from the Cooley family that Norrell Cooley asked me to table, asking for John Walker Place to be named within the Brisbane Corso Reserve.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks, everyone. Could I please have a resolution to accept those?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Strunk, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there general business? Are there any statements required as a result of the councillor conduct review panel order? Are there any matters of general business?
Yes, Mr Chair.
Councillor Johnston.
Thank you. Yes, I rise to speak on the proposed pre-feasibility study for Ipswich Road, Annaly. I'm, I'm fascinated by what's happened over the last few days and I just want to put on the record some facts about, about the situation because it's pretty clear to me that neither the infrastructure chairman nor the Lord Mayor had any idea about what was going on until this, well, until clearly there was a document that they couldn't hide from today. I have for many years now been campaigning with residents in Annaly to have Ipswich Road, Annaly, to have speed reduced, to have intersections improved, to have pedestrian crossings improved, to do active school travel improvements, to upgrade the intersection of Venna Road, Waterton Street and Ipswich Road. And this has been going on for a very long time. Couple of years ago, in the budget, councillor allocated money for the Ipswich Road corridor study. Not a secret, it was an actual budgeted item. And then they did a Move Safe petition and one of the top 10 pedestrian hotspots for Move Safe was Annaly. What a surprise, Ipswich Road, multiple locations along Ipswich Road where people have raised concerns. Then we've tried to have a safety review done when Dr Jeff Cloplin was killed just off Ipswich Road on Venna Road. And there's a number of other things that have been going on in the background as well. I constantly ask our council officers what's happening. I do file requests. I, I seek briefings. I ask for advice and information. I do all of these things. Clearly, that's a shock. That's a shock to someone like councillor McLoughlin, who's probably, I don't even need to say probably, I'd say he's never done a file request in the 12 years or 13 years he's been here. But I got a briefing note from the council officers outlining a number of, a number of recommendations based on their pedestrian safety review. Now, they didn't give me the original document, which immediately I, I, you know, thought, well, there's definitely more to this. What's the background? What's involved? What were the study? What was the recommendation? So I did a file request. Not unsurprisingly, the file request threw up a number of other documents related to the research and the report that they'd done, that they sent me the memo about. Included in that package of information was this cracking memo from the manager of transport, oh, to the manager of Transport Planning and Operations, an extremely senior manager within Brisbane City Council. It went through several other very senior council officers and it came from the Lead Transport Network Planner, Brisbane Infrastructure. So it came from an engineer in Brisbane City Council. Now, interestingly, this report is titled Ipswich Road, Grenard Road to the Volta Street Planning Summary. And I encourage councillor McLoughlin, who yesterday had his staff and the media staff in the Lord Mayor's office all day telling the courier mail, no such document existed. I'd never been briefed about anything to do with this. Well, clearly I have, and clearly I have the document. So I just thought I'd put on the record some of the things that this document says because councillor McLoughlin doesn't appear to have any idea what's going on in his own department. And I would think that that's, well, not really a surprise to me after all these years knowing David. But let's be clear. Here are some of the highlights that I think that he should be aware of, and here are some of the reasons that council needs to act. Brisbane City Council states the following. This is not me, this is the traffic engineers. Traffic volumes are predicted to increase between 17 and 63% from 2014 to 2031. At the moment, there are up to 65,000 vehicles a day using Ipswich Road. And if, based on council's modelling, it increases by 63%, it's going to more than double. Now, this is a road that doesn't function now, that council acknowledges in all its reports and information, does not function. It is consistently in the top five crash, car crash areas in Brisbane. Gimpy Road's the only other road that's generally higher. And it is extremely dangerous. Within this, we have Annaly Junction, which is a local shopping centre, services, schools, libraries, shops, police station, churches, you name it, the blind community, the blind community, this is where they live, this is where their services are. So into this very dangerous environment, we also have a 10% plus freight movement. Now, this is double the citywide average for roads. So we've got massive amounts of heavy vehicles moving through this area as well. There were 416 crashes in the five years between 2007 and 2011. And public transport is, well, where we got the public transport, on the busiest section, there's two minutes frequencies, that's the 100, which is the most over full bus route in Brisbane just about, apart from the one that goes to the university. Active transport, minimal provision despite being a principal cycling route. Amenity assessed as very poor due to high traffic volumes and heavy vehicle numbers. Broader traffic network impacts. High growth and congestion on Ipswich Road will continue to result in traffic diverting to parallel routes, creating congestion, safety, amenity impact. I mean, like, if, if you want to know what's wrong with this city, this report's really quite useful. And then it goes on to talk about potential problem solving. And there are a range of them in here. But the one that councillor McLoughlin clearly is unaware of is the potential four-lane road tunnel. Benefits. Solution has the potential to dramatically improve almost all of the parameters listed, including traffic reductions on parallel routes. Cost. It would be at a high capital cost, but any surface upgrade is also costly. But the tunnel provides an opportunity to at least offset its cost via user charging. Now, let me be clear, I don't think we should be charging a toll. I think there are other ways that we could fund this tunnel, given there's nearly a billion dollars going into Kingsley Smith Drive at $100 million a kilometre in councillor McLoughlin's own ward. Construction impact would be significant but minimal, near the tunnel portals, but minimal elsewhere, and certainly much less than surface upgrades. Likely traffic reduction. minimal elsewhere, and certainly much less than surface upgrades. Likely traffic reductions. Preliminary transport modelling indicates that traffic volumes would be reduced as follows. The reduction, down to 14,500 vehicles per day using Ipswich Road and expected 45,000 through the tunnel. I mean, it's extraordinary. Heavy vehicle traffic. The tunnel would be particularly effective in removing the high number of heavy vehicles, because council could potentially adopt road use policies which attract the majority of heavy vehicles to use the tunnel. We don't want to attract them, so they got that little bit wrong, but it demonstrates that it can be effective. It would also, in addition, reduce traffic on parallel routes such as Fairfield and Anly Roads. Now, I mean, then it goes on, there's a whole heap of other things in here, but then you get to the recommendations. And the second recommendation here, and as I said, there's a number of others, but this is the one that caught my eye. Council undertake a high-level pre-feasibility study of the tunnel solution based on transport modelling and strategic costings. councillor McLaughlin. Next time...
councillor Johnston?
Yes, through you, Mr Chairman.
Through me, please, and in the third person.
Through you, Mr Chairman, to councillor McLaughlin. I would just say to you, next time that you want to try and tell journalists that I'm not telling the truth, you want to make sure that there's not documents...
Through me, in the third person.
Yes, I am speaking through you.
And then about councillor McLaughlin, in the third person, please.
Yes, thank you. I think it would be pretty clear that councillor McLaughlin would want to make sure that he's not misleading anybody, making statements that can be easily disproven, perhaps wants to check his facts before he goes out and says there's no such documents in existence, and apparently I'm trying to widen Ipswich Road. No. I mean, the mythical statements made yesterday by councillor McLaughlin to the media, I think were pretty embarrassing today. Now, as I understand it, this morning, the Lord Mayor was asked about it, and this morning's press conference, he said, he knows nothing about it, there's no such report, I've not been briefed either, and he fatted it away. By lunchtime, he was apparently telling the Courier Mail that he would be considering it. And then by three o'clock this afternoon, he'd voted against the pre-feasibility study.
councillor Johnston, your time has expired.
What a shame.
Are there further speakers? councillor Mackay.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I rise tonight to speak about Meals on Wheels in St Lucia. It's a great organisation, Chair. With the president Cathy Manafold and the business manager Alexi Personin, this organisation delivers not just a meal, it's more than a meal, it's friendship and companionship. Because as we know, Chair, loneliness and isolation is a real and growing problem in our society, and Meals on Wheels at St Lucia and around Queensland, no doubt, offer what certain aspects of our society need, and that is companionship. Unfortunately, Chair, I found out just, I think on Friday afternoon, that the freezer at St Lucia Meals on Wheels finally gave out. It's been repaired numerous times, but alas, it's hit the scrapheap, which means unfortunately, St Lucia Meals on Wheels has a big problem, because Christmas is coming up, they have reduced staffing hours, and now there's no way for them to store their long-life food. So it was with great pleasure, Chair, that yesterday, the Lord Mayor's Community Fund contributed $5,000 to replace the freezers at the St Lucia Meals on Wheels, so that that great organisation can continue to deliver meals to the people in need around St Lucia and all the way through to near Kenmore. So, Chair, I give great credit to the Lord Mayor, Adrian Srirna, for making Brisbane the best it can be and making it a better place for tomorrow than it is for today. And I thank him for the Lord Mayor's Community Fund on behalf of St Lucia Meals on Wheels.
Further speakers? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Before we close the meeting, I want to thank the clerks and all the staff here in City Hall who make sure that this meeting conducts itself smoothly. I'd like to thank everybody for the year. It's been a great honour to be Chair of this council. I want to thank you for that. And I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I look forward to seeing you all again next year. Meeting closed. Thank you. Thank you.